All right, welcome to the Wayland School Committee meeting. We're going to get started at 6:30 and for tonight's meeting, we have all of the school committee members present. We will not be having any of the department administrators at this meeting. In terms of the format for the meeting, we're going to have our public comment period at the end of the meeting. The reason we're doing this is because we feel that it will be more beneficial to everyone if they're able to listen to the discussion before public comments. So we'll start out with our first matter, and our only matter actually, the special matter discussion regarding appointment of acting superintendent, including the process, interviewing of committees and candidates, and next steps. So in terms of the reason we're having tonight's meeting, I'm going to sort of give a brief statement about why we're having tonight's meeting, as well as go through a little bit of an outline of how we got to where we are for tonight's meeting. And then after we do that, then we can sort of go into the next steps as a committee and figure out the process and the planning that we all want to consider and sort of brainstorm and outline that, so. So we know that there have been questions and discussion among the public as to where we are in the hiring process of an acting superintendent and the process to this point. So we wanted to start out the meeting tonight with a brief recap so that everyone is on the same page. Because we know that our acting superintendent is leaving July 1st and our current superintendent is on leave, we know we need a plan for post-July 1st. I discussed possible processes to fill the acting superintendent role with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and our council. Before the next school committee meeting, which was the last meeting we had, where I could discuss the options with the school committee, a potential candidate reached out unsolicited to me. After speaking with potential candidates who reach out, wait, as speaking with potential candidates who reach out, is one of the options discussed with the MASC and council, Erin Gibbons and I spoke with the candidate and brought them to the school committee at its last regular meeting for discussion. We understand that there have been questions and concerns regarding consideration of only one candidate.
It's not recording.
Really? He said it was.
It's not broadcasting?
It's not broadcasting.
I don't know what it's supposed to be, but it's not broadcasting.
Um, sorry. That's why I said it, he could hear us. Um, you mean it's on the weekend?
Right.
They showed the March 29th meeting.
They showed the broadcast that took their, but they just have a blank screen right now. I know Robbie was in here.
Let me ask if it's supposed to be.
Sorry, I know it's down. It's recording. I think that's what I'd like to see. But I should not do.
So is it recording, just not on weekend?
Well, it's recording.
Well, they were ready for a lot of people.
Um, I heard from someone else says it's on channel nine. Did you try that? But that's not marked, so hold on. Oh, now it says eight. It's on the public channel because the select board is on the government channel at 7 o'clock. So you need to go to the public comment, the public channel to watch this.
It's on there.
So channel eight is where it is. I think we're good.
Okay. So as speaking with potential candidates who reach out is one of the options discussed with MASC and council, Erin and I spoke with the candidate and brought them to the committee at its last regular meeting for discussion. We understand that there have been questions and concerns regarding consideration of only one candidate, so the school committee has convened tonight to discuss the process moving forward and whether we want to modify it. I have again been in touch with both MASC and council since our last meeting for guidance. Tonight, we will discuss the options to fill this position and determine our plan to move forward. We recognize the importance to move forward swiftly yet thoughtfully so that we can fill this position and provide a sense of stability to our staff, students, and families. We thank everyone for understanding and patience through this process. So why don't I now kind of give a little bit of a recap before we dive into our discussion? So the options discussed with MASC and council was a full search or slash search committee option, an option number two, following up with potential candidates who reach out, and number three, getting names of potential candidates from MASC. The advice from MASC was process for, they indicated the process for a one-year acting superintendent is generally more streamlined. Therefore, option number one, the full search is not a typical process in these circumstances. And other options include speaking with one or more candidates who express interest or who are recommended from MASC and other sources, and hiring following the committee's vetting of the candidate. Some of the unique issues that we have here in Wayland, we have a July 1st hard stop date with our current acting superintendent. Unlike other districts currently looking for interims, we do not have the luxury of having an assistant superintendent who has already been in the job and can help bridge the time and knowledge gap with the new acting superintendent. We're also filling a myriad of administrative positions, and both our new hires and our current administrators want to know who the acting superintendent will be. Furthermore, the district has a lot of healing that needs to take place. So what has transpired since our last regular meeting? We've had more potential candidates reach out unsolicited, and MASC has provided the names of additional potential candidates as well. So why don't we sort of go through now the next steps that we want to consider? We can also sort of have, you know, some updates that help with that process, but I'm hoping that the five of us can sort of talk through what we think would be a helpful process to follow, brainstorm, and just, you know, by the end of our meeting tonight, have a process in place that we all are comfortable with and agree with and will be what's best, you know, for considering all of the issues that I just outlined, so. I think that's where we are. Do anybody have any questions or thoughts?
I can recap that we do have five potential people that would be willing to speak to I have to say that there is definitely concern for this being a very public process for these people. As Chris outlined, this type of situation isn't always done in such a public interviewing process. So not everyone's willing to go through that type of public situation like we kind of So, but there are five candidates who would be willing to sit down with us and do a work in a booth, in an open session.
So the five would be?
Those five people, yes, are willing to do that. I don't think we should, we have permission to modify with them to discuss names at this point. Everybody knows one of them, but other than that.
I'm just a little confused. You said there are five people who are willing to talk to us publicly?
Publicly, in an open session.
So they are okay with doing that, but they?
Yes. There are other people that were not.
Oh, other people, I see, okay. That's what I was going for.
Okay, thanks. I just think it speaks to like the uniqueness of the situation and that there's a lot of different things that interplay with our situation and the people who would be willing to potentially come and sit down. But there are five people that are willing to sit with us in a public session and discuss an acting superintendent position in our district.
These are people who could begin July 1st to July 1st?
I don't know if you can tell me this. Are they all superintendents or past superintendents or assistant superintendents?
Yes.
So they all have experience?
As assistant or regular?
Correct.
Okay.
And at what point, if this were what we were going to do, at what point would we look at resumes and move forward? Because we have, I mean, it's public that we have.
Anyone that's, anyone reached out to us out of those five, if we decided to move forward with those five people in the process, we can all have that information. Once we confirm that they're okay with going, they're going to be public.
So five's a lot. That's all I was thinking. I think it's good to have choice. I don't know how to cull it down either, so perhaps we need to talk to all five.
Can you speak louder because it's hard to hear?
I said that five's a lot, but perhaps it'll be hard to cull them down without making the information public, so perhaps we need to speak to all five. I think that's what I said.
Erin, how many of the five have actual experience being a superintendent?
You really are speaking quite softly.
I'm sorry. Erin, how many, how many of the five have actual experience being a superintendent?
Versus like assistant?
Versus an assistant, yes.
So just for transparency, these are people that, and I'm gonna go a little rogue here.
Oh, good.
While it's not legally prohibited for us to do an open search and a full search, there are a lot of reasons why we've been strongly advised not to do that for an acting superintendent role. So when we were approached by Dr. Connolly and we brought that to the table, I think that encouraged people in the public to understand that this was something we were looking for candidates and, what's that? It was organic. We didn't post anything. They came out and said, hey, if you're looking, I might be interested. And so because Chris and I were approved at discussions with Dr. Connolly, I, we spoke with those people and not in the, we didn't have a meeting with them.
It wasn't an interview?
No, it was no sort of interview. It was just, this is kind of the timeline that we're thinking. We have a meeting on Monday night, we're gonna discuss it and see if this is something that the committee is willing to do. Would you be willing to put yourself out there publicly? And so that's how we ended up here with these five people, four of them having prior experience as a superintendent as opposed to an assistant superintendent, and those are the people that are willing to sit down with us. And that was kind of the depth of the conversations that I had with them.
And then how many more reached out that were not open? I'm just curious, the total number, who were not open to interviews, public interviews?
Nine? Eight?
You're talking about total number, not in addition?
Right.
Yeah.
So three or four more?
Yeah, it was like three or four of those. And they had a, didn't they have a similar response that they're retired?
Right.
So going through a large public process for a one-year role is not, doesn't interest them?
Yes.
Exactly.
Some of these people are in process or discussions with other districts, so.
Some of the five?
Yes.
And Erin, how many, if you know, how many districts, or Chris? How many districts are looking for a part-time, one-year superintendent position right now?
I don't know. Chris might have a better handle on that.
Well, I know, I don't know like full scope, but I know of a few, so I can tell you, Westwood, Natick, Weston, Melrose, and off the top of my head, that's all I can think of.
And there's a lot of people that, I guess I shouldn't say a lot of people. There are a few people that have served in these acting roles leading up to now and may not be able to do so, given restrictions on being a retired superintendent and going back and needing to have a waiver, and that was something else that we were strongly cautioned about, is the need for a waiver from DUC for a retired superintendent and potentially the lack of flexibility on their part to allow a waiver.
Really?
Yes.
That's really interesting with all the need out there.
So how many of the five fall into that category where they would need a waiver?
One.
Yeah, but it's.
I think it's just one, right?
Yes. I mean, we could get more information and find out differently, but based on what we know.
I think just one.
So to Jeannie's point though, if there's only, if we have five, I assume everybody would want to meet all five. We probably want to think about mapping that out. Jess, what do you think?
I'm thinking, um, so I'm processing a lot of things. I'm not sure where to start with my questions, which is why I'm listening, so that I can make sure that I'm hearing everything. So we're looking, and this is, we have not had a discussion about where we stand with things, so forgive me if I don't know. So we're looking for a one-year acting, so the contract would be a one-year acting, so whomever we bring in, we're committed to paying for a full year.
I mean, I think you're getting into like contract negotiations, which is a whole lot of conversation.
I guess it's more like finances, so that's my concern. So we have an, we have a superintendent we are obligated to pay. So I'm just curious how we do this and we pay one and then we pay the other and where this money comes from in our budget. This is like a really big worry to me as we move forward, I just.
So I have a thought on that, because I've been thinking about it. So I think we're all were elected around this table to really do what's best for the kids and the students, you know, and the families.
I don't know why.
Okay, it's probably because our backs are to you.
Do you want to close the window over? Would it help to close?
Maybe we should just sit around the table with you.
I thought the teams out there were making it more difficult.
Talk to you guys, but I'll just try and talk louder. So, so my thought is that we were all elected to, you know, to do what's in the best interest of the students and the families of the district and the staff. And I really feel that having someone in place, an acting superintendent, because we know on July 1st, we have a hard stop, and I think it's really important to have an acting superintendent and an interim superintendent, assistant superintendent, sorry, in place for the stability of the district. And I know that that's potentially going to cost us a lot of money, a second salary, and I do understand that, but I think that right now, the only thing we know is that Perry's leaving on July 1st. We don't know how other things are, what is going to happen. And I just think that we need to think about that and providing a really stable environment in our district and work the money out. I mean, you're right, we are gonna have to find it, but we don't know what's happening, right? We don't, we don't know, but.
No, but does that mean, I guess I'm asking, does that mean we're going to have to cut positions? Does that mean, like, what does that mean for us?
Well, I don't think we know.
Because of another big responsibility, right? Like, I agree with everything you're saying, and that's my concern is we're looking at a very tight budget to begin with, and then we're saying, we have, we need to have an acting superintendent and in agreement, somebody needs to be acting as our superintendent. But I, and I'm not arguing this point, I'm just trying to figure out what our actual plan is. That's all I want to know.
Well, you know I'm all about fiscal responsibility.
I know, and that's what I'm saying, like, where is this money coming from? Does this mean we're cutting teachers? Does this mean, like, direct services to kids? Like, what are we, what are we doing?
But I don't think we're there yet, Jess.
I know, but I think that's what I'm trying to.
So we can't, we can't plan for that. We can't plan for that.
I feel like we need to though, Jeannie, and you, like, you are like, miss, like you said, miss fiscal responsibility, so that's why, I mean, I'm really just worried.
I know, but I think it's more important to have a stable plan in place for our district with leadership and that we work the, work the money part out. That's where I am on it.
I just don't want it to impact direct services to our students.
I don't think any of us do.
Or do I really feel like we have an alternative?
Yeah.
And then I guess with the healing, like, we keep saying we need healing, right? And I don't disagree, it's been a rough, like, many years here and, but whoever we bring in is not going to bring that healing. A superintendent truly cannot do that. That's up to us, like, as a community, to come together and kind of make a decision to say, we're gonna move forward in a positive way versus a negative way. So ideally, whomever that is will be a figurehead who's positive and upbeat, but true healing is only gonna come from our community, I think. That's just my opinion, that you can't task that on a person. A single individual can't bring people together. I think you need the community to decide that they want to work together. That was just another one of my little thoughts here, but then, I don't love how the process has happened and how we got to this point, but I do think interviewing more candidates would be beneficial to us. And I don't know, I was watching the Weston School Committee meeting last week, and they actually like were saying what a great job they were doing with their process and how in Wayland, like, and it was untrue because it's not what we voted to do, they said the chair just picked someone and hired her. And then I was like, that's not true. So I just don't want to be like that town people are talking about.
Who's that?
The Weston School Committee.
Weston School Committee. Well, we probably just have to worry about ourselves, right? And that's why we're here.
No, I know, and that's what I'm saying, like, I don't want to be, you know, like, I want us to do the right thing and like they would.
So what are the ideas then of the process?
So I like the idea of interviewing candidates. I mean, I would have preferred some sort of like, hey, we are looking, but I do not, I'm open to accepting that people have magically reached out, so.
Anybody else have other, any other ideas on the process? Interviews, etc.?
We should just interview them and move forward. I'm all about moving forward.
Ellen?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Erin?
Sure. She's working magic here.
Well, and if we're doing interviews, then do we also, reference checks, I think, are very important. And to Ellen's point last time, like, you learn a lot from people who aren't listed. So I think we should do our due diligence to ensure that we check.
Probably interview them first.
Yes, no, I know. But yeah, interview and then like, I think we should do some.
Sounds good. So we reserved some times for this week, right? Because we had to post 48 hours ahead, so.
Yes.
What do we have reserved?
Not knowing whether we do it or not, but it was just, I want to make sure that everyone knows this. We posted because you have to post 48 business hours ahead for any meeting, and so if we were going to want to interview, we needed to post, so. And we could always cancel. So, yes, so we posted for tomorrow and then we have a meeting on Wednesday as well.
So we could do, what do we think in terms of, in terms of like an interview in our public meeting? Are we thinking like half hour per candidate or, what do you guys think?
Do we, so typically, I think when we interview, we do have a list of questions. Am I getting ahead of you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I agree with you. We'll have to put together a list of questions, yeah.
So, I don't know. Those two things were in my head, the half hour and the questions were related, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we have a list of questions, then however long that would take, right? If we're gonna do this, why back into it? Why not decide what we want to ask and then?
Right.
So do you think that we should hash that out now, or do you think we should delegate that to individuals? Because we're gonna.
I personally am happy to delegate, but I don't want, I don't know if the people here would like to hear, I don't know. I'm happy to delegate though, I'm not interested in writing questions myself, I'm happy to delegate that to you, Erin.
Me?
Well.
Or to Jeannie.
Honestly, in the past, when we've done interviews, we've each come up with.
That's true.
An interview question.
That's true.
That then we've, we've glommed into, you know, an interview document, basically, that we've, and if there's something that overlaps, we kind of combine them and someone is, someone takes charge of like accepting all the questions and then combining them.
In fact, we probably still have those questions, so we could.
We have them for a lot of positions.
I think we did, she's right, I think we did send a couple of questions, I believe it was you, Jeannie, to Jeannie and.
But anyone else can do it.
Right. And she compiled a list, and then we agreed on the list.
But that doesn't mean we have to do it that way. We can do it right here if everyone wants to.
And then would we meet before the meeting, like before we started interviewing, would we, is it, so I guess, so tomorrow if we have interviews and then, do we know that these people can even come tomorrow? Like, that's, I mean, we have this schedule, the time scheduled, but we need to know if we.
I did give them the option that these were scheduled, but we wouldn't be able to firm anything up until after tonight. Everyone is available. Only one can do, is not here. Everyone else, I would pick up.
So I, so I think the way, and this is, I think, the way most interviews go now, you have a list of questions, and the questions get, just get read out to the candidate. There's no variation or follow-up. That's the way it seems to work these days.
Well, you can have a little follow-up, right? No?
I guess.
You can clarify something, yeah.
Yeah. But yes, Jess, to answer your question, in the past, when we've interviewed people as a committee, we always meet beforehand for a few minutes to kind of like get ourselves settled, figured out who's gonna ask what question. That, it wouldn't just be, we come in and the person is here. That, it wouldn't just be, we come in and the person is here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was like.
We have to have the meeting before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, the time frame is really tight.
It is tight, but... So I am happy to do the questions, I mean, collate them, or whoever wants to. I do not have to do it, but I'm willing to do it, if you guys want. Or if you wanna talk about it now, I can write them down.
If I haven't thought it through, so.
Something I went through last week.
It might be good to just sort of, how, people probably wanna think about it a little bit, so maybe everybody submits one or two questions, we pick one person to collate them, and everyone submits one or two questions to one person.
Yep.
Whoever. Does that work? Does that sound good to everyone?
I'm fine with it, if that's, that's fine. I don't mind doing it.
So we'll each submit one or two questions to Jeannie, and she'll pull them together?
Okay, so five to 10 questions. So back to the half hour, because that's why, that's what made me divert us onto questions.
So maybe we just roughly, maybe we, what do we think, roughly 30 to 40 minutes per interview, roughly? I mean, if we go over, it's fine, if we're under, it's fine. I think that sounds good to everyone?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So are we doing five tomorrow, or four tomorrow, or two tomorrow, or what's the plan here? Or number, are we doing-
There is no plan.
No, but that's what I mean, are we doing all of them in one day? Was that the intention?
Do you want to do all of them in one day?
I feel like that's excessive. That's why I was asking that question.
That's a lot.
We could have a couple people come on Wednesday.
We could.
Meeting.
Do like, three tomorrow, two Wednesday?
I have to edit my prior answer as well, there's two people that would need waivers.
Oh, from Jesse?
Yes, as I was thinking about that.
Okay.
So why don't we, do we wanna attend, so if we're gonna do two on Wednesday, then we'll just have to change the Wednesday's agenda a bit, but we can figure that out. Does that make sense to people? What do you guys think?
It's much better than five in one day.
Yeah, I think we'd be fried, and it wouldn't be good for anyone to do that. But, okay, you guys like that idea, two on Wednesday, three tomorrow?
Yeah.
Erin, can you circle back with people and just confirm that that's okay with them? And then also confirm that their names can be public?
So we're posted at six, so when do we want the-
For tomorrow? Yeah.
So what time do we want the first interview to be? Like, assuming that we're gonna need five or 10 minutes to collect ourselves. Six-ten?
I'd say six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
Yeah.
Will we get resumes there?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, so, after this, I can circulate them.
Right.
They just have to stay with us until I can get everybody and confirm that they're okay with their name being public.
Perhaps you wanna wait to send us the resume until you confirm that? Yeah, I do, actually.
Probably.
Okay, so if we do the first one at six fifteen?
Yep.
So we can either do them, like, every 45 minutes, or every hour, or?
I think every 45.
Okay, so six fifteen-
I don't know, or no, or every hour, I don't know, sorry.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, you mean so that we're tell each of them what time to arrive?
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would give them, I would do 45-minute increments, probably, in terms of arrival times, right?
As long as we think we can get them out of, done, finished.
Well, probably, I would, yeah, I think you're right. So six fifteen, and then maybe, like, we are hopeful to be done by-
By seven?
By seven. And then seven fifteen, eight fifteen for the start times?
So-
Or no, does that not make sense?
Six fifteen, seven fifteen, eight fifteen.
What do you think?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just throwing out an idea.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, hourly, yeah.
Eight fifteen would go till around nine, I think everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I post at six to nine.
All right, like, six fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen and eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen is the start time.
Okay.
And then we need a time for one of the start of the meeting, or the other two?
Right.
It's Wednesday also, it's just clock?
Yeah, it's our, it's our regular school-
It's our regular meeting.
How do we fit in a Zoom into that for this one individual?
On Wednesday, Zoom on Wednesday?
Either day. I'm just saying, how do we, how do we do that? Like, would that person be zooming in on here? That's what I'm guessing, so I'm-
We would just have to talk to Alicia and-
Figure that out?
How to do it.
Okay.
There is a way to do it, because I've seen them do it for other things.
Is, oh, is the Zoom a Tuesday?
Either.
Either one?
Was available.
Okay. All right, well, let's talk to Alicia and figure out how she can help us with that.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we should put that as a specific slot, potentially, tomorrow, because, is that, that's in here, right?
Yeah.
So maybe make that the first?
The first slot? Yeah?
Yeah.
That might be.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
I will do my best to make that happen.
Okay, so why don't I put it on the to-do list? I can talk to Alicia.
Okay.
Is that okay? Or do you want to?
No, no, go ahead. I'm just trying to think this here. And then Wednesday?
So I'm gonna pull up the agenda for Wednesday. How about? So we can see where to fit it. We wanna do it at the start, or?
I feel like that makes sense.
So we have six o'clock, welcome, 6:05, public comment, 6:20 is Perry's update with a bunch of stuff. And seven o'clock, financial matters, administrative, blah, blah, blah. So should we do it before Perry's update?
The only thing is, are we having, if we're having anyone coming to attend the meeting to talk about some of those topics, which we might be in Perry's update?
I think so.
It's here.
What time was Perry's update starting?
6:20, and then it has seven o'clock, financial matters. Wait, perhaps Diane knows.
Oh, we have a lot of stuff.
Diane, are there people coming to the meeting?
Yeah.
There are people coming to, so maybe we should do it after that, like, at seven?
At seven, financial matters.
Yeah, maybe we should do, we should probably do it roughly starting at seven, after the, after the update, because I would, wouldn't want people to be, to come and be waiting.
Yeah.
So.
So on Wednesday?
Yes, for seven fifteen, seven or seven fifteen. Do you think we'll stay on for seven?
You can do seven fifteen.
Seven.
That's fine.
Because, you know, we can skip ahead to some of the other, more mundane things if we have time.
Yeah.
Like the consent agenda.
So should I do seven fifteen, eight fifteen, same as tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then it gives everybody the same amount of time.
So we're saying, just like-
And then if we finish early, again, we can fill in with some.
And then do we, and then after that, we'll just continue with the agenda?
Yeah, we have, like, consent agenda and talking about minutes and stuff.
Policies.
Policies.
Policies on there. Don't forget our policies.
We do have that on there.
Yes, you are. Of course, the end.
Okay.
Now it's gonna be really late.
It's gonna be a late meeting, yeah.
It is.
Okay.
So then that begs the question, when do we talk about the candidates and potentially, you know, make any decisions? Like, do we wanna talk about them Thursday, you know, in a different meeting? Spring break is next week, so we can't really do it during spring break.
Right.
So it's either Thursday, or we wait a week.
And a half.
Right, right.
Could we do a meeting via Zoom on Thursday? Can we do Zoom meetings, so?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can extend them.
Would that work, you? A Zoom?
Yeah, I can do it.
We can do Zoom.
If you guys wanna do that.
We can do Zoom, yeah, sure. What's everyone's timing like for Thursday? Because we could do Thursday or Friday, right?
Yeah.
What's everyone's schedule like?
Are you talking about during the day on Thursday?
Day or evening?
I can't do evening.
Okay. All right, so Thursday, day?
It would have to be during the day on Thursday.
It would have to be in the morning. So after two o'clock, I'm not available.
It's in the morning if people are back. I can do that if people are back.
Is anyone going away on Friday?
I'm away, but I can do.
Oh, I see.
Friday, I'm only available in the afternoon.
I'm available Friday, Friday afternoon, if that's-
I'm on Friday, like, yeah, like, afternoon, I'm not around.
So do you want to do Thursday morning or Friday afternoon?
I can do, I mean, I'd rather do Thursday morning, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm available either one, so, Thursday morning.
So you'd rather do Thursday?
Yeah, but I could do either.
Use it.
It would be Friday, like, after two.
Both of you are available Thursday morning?
I'm available.
What time are we talking?
I have to be done by two.
I have to be done by one.
So for me, I can make this work on Thursday? I mean, the earlier, the better, or the after, like, 11? It's Zoom, right? Is that what we decided?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can do mid-morning if we need to. I can just shift some stuff, but, so-
You're concerned in school by eight o'clock? No, eight thirty. Oh, right, Marcus, sorry. Okay, eight thirty. So do we wanna do nine o'clock? Or is that-
Nine o'clock Thursday morning.
Does that work? No?
That's fine, that's me.
Does that work?
Zoom, we're doing Zoom, right?
Yes.
Wait, what time is it?
Nine AM.
Nine o'clock, so we have to post that, like, ASAP tomorrow morning.
Should we make it nine thirty, just in case?
But, do they open at eight thirty downstairs?
Eight.
Oh.
Nine or nine thirty?
It doesn't matter, whatever.
It's a mandatory.
Nine it is.
Okay, then let's do nine.
Do nine.
I'll just make sure it gets posted. We're doing it via Zoom.
I only was thinking just for the posting issue, but, so nine AM Thursday, right?
Yeah. So if we're doing it via Zoom, I think we do a webinar, because we were almost gonna do the one last week on Zoom.
Right.
So I'll talk to Alicia about setting that up.
Okay.
All right, can you do that, Jeannie?
Yes, I'll take care of the Alicia. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is the, now, I'm still on logistics here, the questions, if we're interviewing people at six o'clock tomorrow, we need the questions sent in by, pick a time, so that I can put them together. It won't take me very long to put them together.
I'm seeing we should try to send you our questions tonight or tomorrow morning, so, but you want a hard deadline time?
Well, don't wait until 5:30.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, noon?
Noon tomorrow?
Yeah.
I mean, roughly, yeah, roughly.
I was starting to think you wanna go by, like, nine AM, I'm like-
No. I just want to make sure I get them. I just wanna make sure I get them. All right, so did you get them? You were in here.
I was blocking out, I'm sorry. Wait, just tell me when I'll get them.
Send your questions by noon.
Noon tomorrow.
To me.
Okay.
What else? I feel like there's gotta be something we're forgetting.
So another logistic thing, I think that we need to, Erin, once you confirm who's coming when?
Yeah, we need to have to-
We need to have the agenda.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, I have to make one more.
Okay.
Okay, that's you. One more question, Erin, just out of curiosity. How many of the five people have actually been acting superintendents before? If you know.
Nobody that had an acting superintendent that I spoke to is interested in this type of process.
Acting slash interim?
No.
Right, they weren't?
No.
So these are all people who've been just su, not just, but superintendent?
Or assistant.
Or assistant.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions that we wanna go over?
Well, yes, I thought of one. To Jess's points about the reference checks. So we interview people tomorrow, we can check those people's references, we interview people Wednesday, and then we're meeting at nine o'clock Thursday. So we're gonna have to check references after as well, right? From Thursday. Just thinking of the timing.
Yeah.
Of it all.
Right. I guess we can, we can always make an adjustment if we need to, right?
You mean a different time?
Yeah.
Well-
It'll be tricky.
It'll be tricky, because of the posting.
Yeah.
So.
Do we wanna adjust it now, till, like, Friday, or?
That's fine, because that would give more time.
That actually could be more sense.
I think that does make more sense.
Yeah, that actually is a good point.
So Friday afternoon.
Jess, Friday?
I can do, like, later in the day on Friday, but I can't do Friday morning.
I just have to be done by, like, four.
So anytime before 4:30 is fine with me.
So I can't do until after, like?
And it's gonna be, hold on.
Cross this off.
I wouldn't, this is in person or on Zoom?
Zoom.
Okay. I could do anytime after 1:30 on Zoom, sorry.
You can do anytime after 1:00?
1:30 on Zoom.
Okay. I have my footwork up, so you guys tell me.
Jess, what was yours?
I can do after two.
After two.
What is, what is our plan? Is it just to, like, hash out, like, just to talk about candidate? What is our plan for Friday? I guess, I never asked what the plan was for Thursday. What is the goal of that meeting? Just to, like, decompress, talk about it, like, talk about next steps for reference checks? Like, what is it?
I thought we might check references before Friday.
That's really quick.
I know, but we did it.
Sometimes it takes people to get back, a few days.
Well, we can try.
To get back.
We can try. I mean, I guess I'm looking at Friday, like, if we have a clear person that we think might be good, and we've checked references, that potentially we move forward. But I don't know if that'll happen by Friday. I guess that's what I was thinking. I don't know what everyone else is thinking.
Yeah, I was thinking it's gonna depend on the conversations.
I was more thinking, like, we'd process and, like, maybe have a timeframe where we were gonna make decisions that was a little less intense. I guess it just feels very intense to be like, okay, we're interviewing these, like, it just feels quick, that's all, to go and make a decision on Friday when we've interviewed Tuesday and Wednesday, and then that only leaves Thursday to, like, check anything, and then to, like, come in and make a decision just seems really rushed.
It might be. I don't know. I guess I was going back to thinking about what Erin said about the fact that several of them are talking to other districts too. So. Not that that means we should rush.
No, like, to your point, that we should do what's best for the district and the kids, and I don't want to make a decision because we feel pressured, and I just want to do the, do whatever we do, I feel like we are in an awkward position, and we just really need to think it through.
Agreed. I don't know how we'll all feel Friday.
Yeah, we'll just have to talk through it at our meeting on Friday.
I don't know if, if, um. Are you guys going out of town?
Yeah, but not.
All three of you going out of town?
Yeah.
For the break?
During the break, yeah.
Just thinking Zoom. People want to think about it over the weekend, we could do Zoom on Monday. I don't know if you would be willing to devote some of your vacation time.
I think Erin already is on Friday.
So much time.
I can do Monday. So if we. Thank you, Erin, thank you very much. So, so I'm just thinking, we can see how it goes tomorrow and Wednesday, and if we needed to post for a Monday Zoom meeting, we could do that if you guys are willing to. It bothers Jeannie and I, because I'm gonna be pregnant this week, so.
I'm here.
Is here, so.
On my paper calendar.
So, so why don't we see how it goes? How about that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm out of town, but I can always jump on a Zoom on Monday.
Okay, so we're not picking a time?
We can't post a Friday meeting after our meeting on Wednesday. So if we have, wanna have a meeting on Friday.
I think we should post.
I think we should just post.
And always cancel it.
Yeah. So let's just pick a tentative time for Friday, and then we can always cancel it if after Wednesday we decide we want to.
Sorry, I picked one thirty.
So we're definitely not doing Thursday?
Thursday's out.
Okay.
Okay, so after two, after one thirty. Oh, one thirty.
I just said one thirty, I don't, whatever.
Anytime, I need to kind of be done by four thirty-ish.
I can do after two, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so what's convenient? Because yours is the latest. Like, do you want to do two or two thirty?
I can do two thirty. Let's do two thirty.
Okay.
I think we are. I just want to make sure I get this. I think we are.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions or items that anybody can think of that we haven't thought of.
I just really think that we should send something out to the community outlining that we're, that we need to do this. So if we want to designate someone, anyone, two people, whatever, to draft the communication and just outline.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
What we're talking about and when they'll be, to the best of our knowledge at this point, I think would be really good.
Yeah. Sure, who would like to do that?
We're all super excited to do that, Chris. I would, I'm, I'm not volunteering because I actually can't get it done in a timely fashion. So I don't want to hold us up because I don't want to do it.
I'm not gonna be able to do that, and call if you can.
I don't mind doing it. Does someone want to look at it? Someone should.
I will happily look at it, Jean.
Okay, so we're delegating to Ellen and Jeannie?
Delegating to Ellen and Jeannie to send the communication out to the community.
Tomorrow.
I have tax returns, so I'm sorry, I can't.
I would say.
I can't do that.
The earlier the better, do you think?
Yeah. Since we're all on public right now?
No, no, the earlier the better, because, you know, it's the 13th tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, good point, good point.
I can do it tonight, Jeannie, if you want to do it tonight.
Yeah, actually, probably I just should.
That's probably better, because, uh.
Okay. And just, should we get?
From the whole committee.
From the whole committee, so everyone's name? Can put everyone's name on it?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
And you want to send it out via, um, I always, I'm never sure if we should send it out via school messenger, but it does get to everyone that way.
Can we do it both ways?
Probably.
I think you, Diane can give you the right.
So we can give it to you? Good. Okay.
I also think that in that communication, it should sort of reiterate some of the things that Chris touched on earlier in the meeting for anyone who hasn't watched the meeting, or if it gets a little bit funky with the recording.
I have it typed out.
I think everyone else is okay with that.
And you could share your.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Are we good? We're good, we can do public comment. Unless anyone on the committee has anything else they want to talk through on this. No? No, we're good? Good? Okay. Yes, sir?
Question. Well, first, um, I haven't had a kid in the way of public districts since 2000.
Do you want to do public comment? Because we're about to start public comments.
Oh, I thought you just started.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I, I was just kind of.
I'll withdraw.
Sorry. Yeah, okay. All right, so you guys have anything else you want to talk about? All right, okay. All right, so, um, so we'll go into public comments, and, um, if you could just, when you do public comment, state your name, address, please speak about what's in the purview of the school committee. Please be respectful. If, just by a show of hands, can we just see who would like to do public comments tonight? Okay, so we'll, um, we'll do public comments for three minutes per person, so, sir, do you want to start? Sorry, Ted.
I live at 344 OCP, right next to Lavin's or down the street from Lavin's. So I think, I have a question for the group. Do you, as a group, have a good understanding? Do you totally have a good understanding of what happened? I mean, because for me on the outside, it's not very transparent, and maybe it can't be, but I don't see how you can hire somebody and put them in this position if you don't know what the position is. Because there's, there has to be a lot of turmoil in the school system caused by what happened with Omar. Whether it was his fault or somebody else's fault, it's still, it's a problem. If you don't have a good grasp of that, I don't even know how you can write your questions. So that's a question I have to the group. And then the other thing is, my concern, more over and above the school, is I don't want Wayland to be a town where a person of color doesn't want to move here. So I know you're all volunteers, and I understand that, and really appreciate it, but you've got this thing now, and I, you know, I don't know the way out of it. It would seem to me there needs to be a lot more transparency, maybe even like a truth commission. How can the community heal if we don't know what happened? We can't. We can have our suspicions, you know, but that's it. And the other, one last question is, is, has Omar had any interest in coming back? That's it.
Are those, those are all your comments, sir? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name in the beginning.
John Ballam, B-A-L-L-A-M, that.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to do public comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Under my seat. So I have to say that what the committee has done tonight is extraordinarily strange. To put the comment, I'm sorry?
They want you to say your name.
Sure, my name is John Pierce. I live in Newton, and I have done consultant work in here, and I've worked with Dr. Easy for many years. Now, I'm just saying it for everybody to consume. But to leave the public speaking part of this thing at the end means you don't, you're not interested in what people in this room have to say in affecting your decision. But I, I think a simple example is, the way to keep people's names confidential and discreet is to not name who they are until you've identified the two finalists or the first finalist. I don't understand what the rush is. This whole thing tonight looks just like the entire investigation. Everyone knows the investigation found nothing, and the committee has yet to speak to it. We also know from reading the paper that there was another investigation going on by the chairman of the committee, which is outside your purview and responsibility. So when this gentleman said, no one knows what's going on, this whole thing has been shrouded in secrecy and silence. There is no transparency, and there's been a great deal of collusion. And if anyone ever really knew the story, the attitude about what's going on would be viewed with some heart. It's an ugly story. An ugly story, and it isn't proper. I thought today about what do the people in Wayland walk away with? What are the defining messages? Number one, if you hold people accountable in this system to school committee policy, they're coming for you. They're coming for you. What I've also seen, we've seen that bullying is rampant within this district. The graffiti, the writing on the wall, the writing on the bathrooms, the teacher who was bullied by their own department, and no one, no one yet has answered for that. No one stepped up and said a word about it. If Dr. Easy had moved in here and decided to just keep himself in place for as long as he could, he would be here forever. But he came in here because this is a place that needs change, and everyone recognized it during the time he was campaigning. Spent a whole day talking to people, and people loved what he had to say. Why? Because he was going to take on some things that no one else would do. But in this district, and you have a history of this, when someone speaks up, when someone's a whistleblower, they pay, and they pay dearly.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to do a public comment.
Mary Ann Burkowski, 251 Lake Shore Drive. When this meeting started, I thought I would actually find out something. But I haven't learned anything else about where we are, why we're here today, in the spot that we're in. And it's, you know, transparency is such a popular word today, and I have not seen that here at all. And I, you know, I'm reluctant to say that because, as one of the speakers said, you spend a lot of time, but you know, you're not going to be judged on whether you got a budget done. You're gonna be judged on what I'm getting asked about. What's the matter with Wayland? I've been asked that, because I attend events that are about diversity. When I mention I'm from Wayland, I have to discuss what's happening right here, and I don't know what's happening right here. But that's how we're seeing. It's now the face of this community, and we're in the Boston Globe. And it's, what's happening here is not seen well in the communities that I'm in touch with. You know, those groups recognize that words like tone, management style, congeniality are code words. Code words that are used represent racism, which is something we say we're not. We don't like that R-word. You calling me a racist? I can only say to you that the more strongly people who look like us say that this isn't about race, the more strongly we need to question and suspect that it absolutely is. I want to end my comments as a compliment to Dr. Easy. He came here as a black leader when many, many might have told him, I'm sure he was told, that he would not be welcomed. And I have to, I can only ask you, was he? Did some of the staff that left here, because maybe they saw that he wasn't being treated well? What I'm listening to is you collegially talk about replacing him is, it makes me stop. It makes me have to take a deep breath, because it's so emotional. And you know what? Healing? I'm talking about trauma here, and there are some people in this community who are going to be really traumatized by what's happened. And I don't see that at this table. I don't see a recognition of that trauma. You know, and we're so cavalier about paying two, two salaries, $200,000. I don't know, you know, I want to do what's right for the schools, but $200,000. I've sat here and listened to how we're struggling to pay special ed services. So I guess we're gonna use $200,000 for what I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to make comments? Sure.
Jeff Sklar, Brooks Road. Let's have some reality, okay? There's some truths that people know, and I'm gonna put some on the table. There's an open meeting law complaint filed against the school committee. Erin, you called Dr. Easy, and you told people that the school committee exonerated Dr. Easy. If that's false, you're welcome to say so right now.
That is false.
Okay. Anyone else here? Anyone else want to tell us whether Dr. Easy was exonerated in the report? Okay. Well, he was.
Have you read it?
No, but if you guys had an investigation in November, you said you were in a rush to do it, you had it in one week, you had to move it right away, there's been no billing since January, you spent $28,700. You're going to spend money on open meeting law complaints, six of them so far, probably about 14 violations at least, if you lose them all. Six open meeting law complaints. You're going to be paying for, what else are you going to be paying for? You have an MCAD filing, you have an arbitration, you have another superintendent. So you guys are going to spend money on litigation. You're probably gonna lose a lawsuit to the, to our superintendent, because when you did the investigation, you didn't follow any HR protocol, you didn't tell them what the charges were, you didn't tell them who spoke to them, and you didn't come out with a report. Can you, you guys are so smart, $28,700, no report? You can spend $200,000 on a superintendent, you're not, you're not gonna tell the other one what's going on? It's outrageous, your behavior's outrageous, it's embarrassing. I have closely watched school committees now for more than a decade. I virtually watch every meeting. You guys are dysfunctional. You're the worst school committee in Wayland I've ever seen. What you're doing is absolutely shameful. It is just absolutely incredible. You guys started talking today about hiring a new one that you're gonna have a one-year term. Today, you're discussing process, but you already discussed process privately beforehand, otherwise you couldn't say that to anybody. So where's the report? I've been asking that. One thing is, you guys don't answer questions. You say when people come to meetings, we don't answer questions during public comment, so I asked you questions, and I asked, can you tell me why Ms. Greco keeps recusing herself from budget votes and sped votes? I said, you said you don't answer questions during meetings, I said, would someone please contact me after the meeting and let me know? Would you please let me know what we've decided to take Dr. Easy off leave? I asked, can you tell me how long he will be on leave? No phone calls. Regarding the abuse of the students at the high school who saw bullying in front, I spoke with Ms. Mr. Gushi. I've spoken with the parents involved. Do you know how much contact the schools have had with those kids who were victimized? Zero. No follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hi, Carol Plon, Ball Brook Road. I guess I don't need to reiterate a lot of what I've heard today, but pretty much for me, this comes down to 21 questions game. When you don't have the information, you start filling it in with supposition, and I hear various things people have told me, and I can play all sides between the teachers, Dr. Easy, you guys, the town, but I really don't understand how we got here again, because I just, here's my bias. I look at this through the view of the whole thing that happened with Stephen Cass and the whole retaliation that seems to go on, which is not exactly your fault, but it certainly, our town seems to be really good at this, because things like, you know, if Dr. Easy was so bad, why didn't someone just get him a coach? I mean, there's like, how much preventative medicine went into this? And I don't know. See, this is it. Maybe you did all this stuff, I don't know. So I guess between, like, things like the NDA for Jamison, and there's gotta be a better way that when a problem comes up, that people can be clearer about what's going on, because nobody learns anything either, right? As a public, as a group, as citizens, we learn nothing if we don't know what happened. And then everybody speculates, and things get really ugly. And I have a real problem with that. I can't even report, like, what happened. I don't even know when it comes down to, did the report come out? I don't know. So this is, there must be some way you guys can communicate more, or at least even tell us that, you know, you did this because the lawyers told you to do it. Anything that would just make things clearer would be really appreciated. So I am sorry you guys end up taking up a lot of battering, but on the other hand, we gotta do better. I don't, and I can't even make suggestions, because I don't even know what went on, so, um, I'm sorry, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sage Lister, New Bass, 35 Cameron Bridge Lane. Jess, I really liked what you said today about we have to find a way to move forward. I'm really tired, I don't know about everybody else here, but I feel, I'm tired because I think we're stuck. We're stuck in this horrible. We're stuck in this horrible, terrible place that none of us want to be in, and we've got to work together to get out of it. Our kids, I have two kids in the district right now in 10th and 11th grades, and it's, it's hard. They're feeling impacts already, they have been for months now, and I'm sure there's others that have felt it for even longer. So I want to keep our 2,700 students that are experiencing, they need solutions now. We cannot solve anything if we're battling each other, right? I'm sure all of us have kayaked. If everyone's kayaking in a different direction, the kayak doesn't go anywhere. That's what I feel like we're doing. We've got to start rowing together, and maybe there's a different path. Maybe we don't agree on exactly where the path is going, but if we don't start to do that, we are never going to get out of this place that I don't think any of us want to be in. So my message, I think, is more to the, to the community that's listening than to you guys. The one thing I did want to add, Jess, you talked about healing. I think the healing really starts with school committee. You're the leadership of our school district, so your collaboration, your communication, all of that, you set the tone for that. So just, you know, think about that. I think that that's a separate agenda item, that maybe there's other work that needs to be done. So I want to throw that out. I also shared some thoughts on our Wayland Community Forum Facebook group today, that I wanted to just highlight some of the things that I said there. I'm sorry, I said some of it in my opening, which was improv. So talked about working together in a collaborative, constructive manner. We have to be hyper-focused on what I think is a shared objective, which is making sure that all students in Wayland get the best education that's possible. That's what we're all trying to get to. I hope that people have listened to what school committee has said tonight and in other places. I heard some comments about I haven't learned anything new. I think we did learn things new. I listened to every school committee meeting, I learned some new things. So I think there are some things that have come out. I think you need to remind yourself that school committee is the only people that actually have the full context here. We have a personnel matter, we have an active discrimination claim. That is not what other towns around us are facing. So we as the public, just, we just don't have all the information, we probably never will. And school committee can't provide it, right? This is an active discrimination claim, so we need to keep that in mind. So I, as a reminder, I think we need to trust, these are all elected officers that we elected. We have elections in a few weeks, so you can make changes, that's your way to advocate. I think we need to, you know, you may not trust in their abilities, you may think that they're the reason for the challenges, but they're the ones that are in charge. So I just hope we can give a benefit of the doubt and really work together to come out of this really terrible place that we're in. Thank you. Sorry for going all the way over.
Thanks. Does anyone else like to make a comment? Yes?
Hey, guys, thanks. It's Kim Raquel. I'm Yvonne Coedrue Road. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. I'd like to build off of a couple of things that Sajal said. She talked about us being in a kayak together, and we need to work together, and I think it's a great analogy. But the problem is, our kayak has holes in it. So the first thing we need to do is like, acknowledge the state of our kayak and get our kayak fixed. So let's acknowledge the reality that we've got problems. So as an example, there was a letter from one of the candidates, Dovi King, about some of the problems you guys have going forward towards making a decision. And she talked about, for example, there's going to be a new committee, no matter what happens in the election. Chris, you're not going to be on, on the committee, and Jeannie, you're not, and so that committee is going to be the one that's going to, going to work with whoever our superintendent is, whether it's someone new or whether it's, it's our current superintendent. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Another that she pointed out is, you do have many open meeting law complaints against you, including one that I filed, and several that George Harris filed, and George has a pretty good hit rate. And both he and I basically said, hey, look, if you find that these were violations, then you, attorney general, should nullify the votes taken in those sessions. So an example of one that I know I'm going to win is that there was outside communication on your committee before you made, between October 13th and October 26th. Erin, you didn't, you said no when Jeff asked, but you worked with me on that open meeting law complaint, and so you know beyond reasonable doubt, beyond any doubt, that there was communication outside of that meeting. And I'm going to win that one. So that alone can cause the attorney general to nullify your vote. So what are you going to do when the attorney general nullifies a vote and you have another person sitting in, in Dr. Easy's chair? So I just urge you to slow down a little bit, address the things before you, let the next committee pick the next, what's going to happen, because they're the ones who are going to deal with it. I told the attorney general, you know what? This is a huge, the whole open meeting law process is hugely flawed, because you know who's going to take all the open meeting law training? All the open meeting law training that's going to be required because of all the violations you guys have? That's going to be done by Dovi or Christina or Craig or, oh my God, who am I leaving out? Erin, thank you. I'm so sorry. They're the ones who are going to sit in that open meeting law training for the things that you guys did. That's not fair. That's not right. You guys should call the AG. I hope you didn't vote 5-0, that that thing wasn't, that when you voted to submit your response to me, because you all knew that it wasn't true. But just please consider, like, calling the AG and saying, you know what? We did that. Sorry, our mistake. Don't make somebody else do our training. That's not fair. That's not fair. So first acknowledge your kayak has leaks, and then figure out how to row together. Thanks.
Could I say something? Could I say something? I just want to make sure that the public knows, it keeps being portrayed that there are open meeting law violations that we've had. These are complaints that have been filed, and the AG has made no determination on any of the complaints that have been filed yet, so.
Okay. Any other, what time is it? Any other public comments? Yes?
Hi, my name is Hope Podell. I live at Seven Geneson Road. I've lived, we've lived in this town for over 25 years, and our two kids went through the Wayland school system. We came in, they were in second and fourth grade. And I just have to say this, is like, I don't know what percentage, but a lot of people moved out here because of the school system. Yeah, it's beautiful and all that, but the school system. And in the last six months, actually, maybe a little longer, I've been paying closer attention and speaking with people. And wrote a letter to Dr. Easy after the horrific event that occurred. I'll keep it right to the point. I am, and it's not broader than you, and it's, you're volunteers, everybody on every committee and board in this town and every other town and city around are volunteers. But that doesn't give you an out for anything. You take the job and you do it, and you either do it correctly, or you leave the job. And as far as I'm concerned, based on the insights of people who are current parents of kids in school as well, it saddens me so for their children that can just go about your business. And it seems like, and this is like a bad plague, the director is like from nowhere, and the producer is like from nowhere, and you talk about doing something a day away, another day away. And by the way, Monday is Patriot's Day, not to mention the vacation. The way you call a process is like a hiccup when you make a decision. I'm mortified.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment?
Some of this is maybe a slight repeat, but while Kim was speaking, Sajal was being distracting and speaking extremely loudly, so I'm thinking people might not have been able to hear her, so that's part of the reason I decided to speak anyway. So I have two questions for the committee, and I know that you can't answer them now or you don't answer them now, but maybe you'll think about answering them.
Ben, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name and your address.
Oh, sorry, I didn't tell you. Edna Vassalovsky.
And your address?
Gleason Lane. The first question I have is, you know, how is it legally permissible to offer a one-year contract when our current superintendent hasn't resigned and hasn't been terminated? And Jess already mentioned that, you know, we need to think about how we're going to raise funding for a second superintendent. We're working under budget cuts, and the consequence of this potentially leading to having to fire teachers or reduce support for other programs. But it's not just the fact that you're paying for a second superintendent, but if you put a contract in place that isn't legally permissible, and I'm not saying it is or isn't, I'm not an expert there, I'm asking that you just double-check and make sure, because if it's not, we're going to end up with many more legal bills and litigation, and that's going to stress the budget even more than just for the compensation of a second superintendent. The other question I have is specifically towards one of the members of this committee, and they know who they are, and Kim mentioned it, which is, you know, will you acknowledge publicly that you worked behind the back of your colleagues on an open meeting law complaint?
What will I acknowledge?
And?
Since this is public comment.
I asked if you will acknowledge, it's interesting that you can have a dialogue when you pick and choose, but other people have asked questions and you don't respond to them. So I'm just going to move forward because you heard what I said, and you're welcome to comment later. The other question I have is, will you come forward with the knowledge that you have about the basis of the investigation and whether or not your colleagues are unbiased? And it's really important, you know, people talk here about trust, but trust is something that's, you know, can be lost. So when you operate in ways that cause trust to be lost, you can't then demand that it's just given. And, you know, having an unbiased mindset and having credibility is really critical to ensuring that we can hire a quality candidate, both because it's required to vet people and also because they'll also be trying to determine whether or not we're a group that they want to work with.
Thank you. Bernie, any last comments?
Yes. An impromptu comment. Very impromptu. Robin Scar, Brooks Road. I'm a townie. I grew up here, I went to the high school here, all the school, Locur, the old junior high, the high school, had daughters who graduated through the schools here, and I am horrified at what's going on right now. We finally have a superintendent who actually stood up and did the right thing for the students, finally had a student-centric that says, "We should see if math tests should be returned." And he set up a committee, and they should be returned, and teachers are fighting him on every level. And all of a sudden, now, we, one complaint, an investigation, $28,000, regardless of the number of lawsuits that are probably going to come out of this, you are spending our money like it's growing on trees and it's water. You are being so short-sighted. The superintendent should get his job back and do what he was originally hired when he had a proficient, proficient review just last year. And all of a sudden, because certain people are complaining and you're hearing the noise instead of looking at what he's doing, teachers are bullying teachers, and he was stopping it. Students are being bullied. You've got to look at what he's doing and what he did in the short time that he was here. He was really doing a great job, and he was standing up and doing what's good for the students. And now you, as a school committee, are doing what's bad for the students, bad for the community, bad for, and not being fiscal responsible. Oh, we'll find the money. Great. You're going to spend millions of dollars when you're going to have all those lawsuits? Oh, we'll find the money. What tree is it growing on? Because there's no tree like that in my backyard. You really got to think about what you're doing, and I would cancel all these and put him back in place, because he was finally doing what a superintendent is supposed to do that hasn't been doing it for years, because we've had lousy superintendents before, especially the previous one. We finally have somebody who's willing to stand up, take the heat, and make our system better, and you guys shut them down for no reason because obviously there's no report. Erin, you asked if we've seen the report? There isn't a report published, because we've asked for it, and nobody's seen it. So we can't see the report.
Thank you. Why don't we wrap up, so we can adjourn now?
Great.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.